Six thirty-five, Michelle will be joining us. Policy, we're going to discuss policy.
Okay. Sure, so we have several revisions. The first one is Policy 5113.2, Attendance Excuses Dismissal. And... Let's find that one. There it is. The only change on that policy is strike through on the second to last page. We did implement this this year with the forty-five days. And what we found was if a student's missing forty-five days, it's under extenuating circumstances and most of the time related to a medical need or something of that nature. And there's already been multiple meetings with families throughout that whole time. Another meeting, we realized, seemed really unnecessary. Because if a kid's missing that much time and you look in the log entries, they've probably already had four or five meetings with parents and home visits and things of that nature. So this meeting really seemed just to put the whole thing over the edge, including parents and families. So we're requesting to strike through. However, we will continue to follow through on all of our strategies and actions specific to students who are excessively or missing an excessive number of school days. And I got an update on the chronic absenteeism number reported to the state and it was actually fifteen point seven.
Wow.
Yeah, yep. So that was the first submission. There'll be some data and error cleanup, but it was well under the seventeen percent that we self-reported at the end of the school year.
That's better than we expected.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah. Well, it was, you know, testament to the administrators and the teams, they worked very, very hard.
So my only question is, like, this, the way it's written, it guarantees them a meeting at, you know, at forty-five days, right?
Yep.
And I know, I know you said we're doing meetings, you know, we are, but should there be a provision in here to, like, guarantee a meeting? Like, what if they slip through the cracks or, you know, like, and that's really my only, should there be something added, like, you know, a little note that, I don't know how it should read, but that's really my only, like, I, maybe at forty-five days, if no other meeting has happened?
Julie, I see you shaking your head. Go ahead. Because Julie met with some families, so yeah, let's...
No, if we're at forty-five days, A, it's too late to have a major change.
Okay.
There is a policy, not a written policy, I'll say, but the district attendance team has come together and met with a representative from each building team. And there's a strategic plan, like, there's five days out, a letter goes home, ten days out, there's a meeting. So there are thresholds in that, which is in forty, forty-five days is a quarter, which way too far out to even have attendance recovery, you know, credit recovery at that point. But it is documented and every attendance team has strict cutoffs. The exception is the high school because their numbers don't align because of the half-year courses. But basically, anything, once a student gets to ten, there has been at least a phone call with the family. And it's usually, usually around twenty days' absence that a family is reported to the Department of Children and Families for Education on the black. So we always have a meeting before that happens. So there's definitely a process.
Is there, should any of that language be included in this? Or should we, you know, mention that in this? Or, you know, I, I'm just, I don't know.
As part of the policy, I think it does, like, it does require us to have these teams. Like, if you look on the previous page, it requires us to have these teams and that is the duty of those teams.
Okay, I mean, if that's enough language, we want, that's fine.
This says, you know, it doesn't say is warranted, it actually says will be required.
Right. One more thing to note about each building. The district attendance team at the end of last year talked about putting together a brief slide deck for back-to-school night so that families understand the difference between excused and unexcused absences because it's very confusing. Even when you read the policy, it's very confusing.
Yeah, actually, Julie, I have a question about that.
Yes. So in that state, that's the state, that's not the district. The state says absences one through nine are excused with a call from the parent, a nurse saying the child was sick. Once you get to the tenth absence, there's very specific guidance on how it's excused. Now it has to be a doctor's note. Even if a parent calls on day eleven and they say, "My child's sick," by the state guidelines, it's not an excused absent, absence unless the school receives notification from a medical provider within ten school days.
So my question is, do excused absences count towards the eighteen?
Yes. Every absence is an absence. In the state's eyes, regardless of excused, unexcused, an absence is an absence.
Okay.
And, you know, I think, you know, the number I just reported, I think, is a testament, you don't get a reduction in chronic absenteeism like that without frequent communication meetings and contact with parents over and over and over and over again. So I'm confident that the policy meets our needs, supports the work that Julie had done, and establishes a continued pathway forward in tackling our chronic absenteeism rate.
Just to drive that home, Erica, what was the reported absentee rate the year before?
Twenty-two point eight percent.
Wow, that's a great...
It's amazing. I feel like it doesn't...
Did I get that right?
Fifteen doesn't seem as big until you realize it's from almost twenty-three percent.
Yep.
That's huge.
Huge.
Well below the state average.
Well below the state average.
So let me ask another question that sort of really isn't sort of relevant to this policy. Why do we care if it's excused or unexcused if the state says they're all absences? Like, what is that? Is that for us in district? Like, we want to keep track of it?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's, our local policy is a little different than how the state collects attendance data. But that is for reasons mostly at the high school level and then in the middle school where we may offer credit to kids, where there might be a medical situation and providing opportunities for, you know, kids to go visit colleges and be excused for that.
Okay.
So, yeah, yeah.
We can't change it. We can't change these, because the state still requires we have them, even though they count everything else.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Good, very good questions, though.
Kind of doesn't make sense, but, I mean, it does.
I could be wrong, I just speculation. I think the reason the state did it originally was to try to kind of impose some accountability on parents where if they're going to be out, they want them to try to get a doctor's note or to explain the absence as opposed to just calling them out. But that's just kind of specific.
Makes it a little, you have to work a little harder.
All right. The student residency policy is the next one, 5118. And if you noticed, there's just a change about the notarized affidavit declaration. And then we offered families the opportunity to be able to have it notarized here in central office because we do have a notary if they don't have an access to one in the community. And then there's also just a change on the actual residency declaration form. So that's a property owner or property management company. And I believe those are the only changes. Any questions? Nope, okay. Policy 5114.12, Student Handbook. You can see the changes in there and we just made it to ensure that it's consistent with our current practices specific to the handbook. Any questions? Very good. School Volunteers, Policy 6162.4. I think what we did was we just revised it to be consistent with the practices that Julie Church was employing as part of our district's school volunteer program. Okay, any questions? All right. If you don't mind, I'm just going to skip over 5132, we can end our conversation with that, and go to 4112.5, Fingerprinting and Criminal Justice. And you can see there's a strike through and a small change in a date. And the title of the policy has been shifted to be consistent with the contents. Any questions?
Why did, I mean, did we just update this to the policy that was recommended to us and why were school nurses taken off? I mean, I don't know why they were kind of, it seems like they were kind of single outside.
Are you on the criminal justice?
Yeah, 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 right.
4112.5?
4112.5. On the bottom, it says it crosses out the nurses, school nurses, the nurse practitioner.
If they're under contract with the board, she'll also submit to a criminal history if that was taken off.
Oh, yeah. They're automatically required by law, so we don't have to have them specifically in the policy itself. Excuse me. Policy 3541.44, Use of Private Automobiles on School Trips. We revised this to be consistent with the K policy, that no student shall be sent on school errands with their own vehicle or an employee vehicle.
I have a question on that one.
Yes.
So currently, I know sports, if a parent contacts Anthony ahead of time, they can transport their child from a sporting event in their own car?
Oh, yes, they have to fill out a form.
Is that still...
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
That's not a liability in any way?
Not if they feel, they fill out the form for release. Yep. Good question. And...
I have a question on that one, too. Maybe I'm overthinking it, but the board assumes no liability for students' use of his or her personal vehicle, school-related activities.
Correct.
But, and will not be required to use, be required to use them, but what if they do?
We do not assume liability for it.
Do, but they have the choice to do it?
Not necessarily, no. No, for a school-related activity, they, they would need to, well, they would need, they need to use the transportation that was provided. If the activity's here, a student might be driving themselves to school for the activity after school hours.
I understand.
Yeah. But we wouldn't require them to use their own vehicle for any school-related activity where transportation was being provided.
Okay.
Yep. And then, the school attire, dress and grooming. We currently had two policies, 5132 and 5132.1. The request here this evening, based on the survey data, the conversations that we had, and the information that principals shared with board members specific to challenges with enforcing the uniform policy, is to eradicate Policy 5132.1, Dress and Grooming, school uniforms, and revise Policy 5132, School Attire, Dress and Grooming. 5132 was previously, I believe, brought to the board. There was no action taken on it, we had simply just discussed it in the context of the previous conversations, and so it is here before you again this evening with strike through and rewritten in red to basically align with the K policy around standard dress code and grooming.
It is in compliance with...
Correct. Yep. Yes.
The one very important question I had...
Please.
Was number six, under minimum safe attire, shoes which are safe and appropriate for weather, course assignments, athletic, and other conditions. The immediate question is going to be, can the kids wear Crocs to school?
Well, I ask you for your thoughts on that.
Just going to throw that out there.
Well, will some of, will the schools still be able to make certain regulations in their student handbook?
Yes. This will be part of the district handbook, but, you know, they, they, at the elementary schools, they may say no flip-flops or shoes that don't have a back or something that's protecting your toes.
They might not be appropriate to the activities they might encounter throughout the day.
Right. And, you know, students might wear Crocs to the high school, they wear Crocs all the time, it would be a very difficult thing for us to battle the Crocs at the high school and the middle school, I'll just say that. But obviously, they're not wearing Crocs for gym class. Or, you know, they're not wearing Crocs in the manufacturing lab or woodshop. So, you know, there are places where they're more appropriate and not appropriate, where they'll have to choose the correct footwear based on the classes that they may have for the day. And I think, you know, high school, middle school kids can be responsible in doing that.
So the, like, the middle school, I don't know, the high school specifically, like, the no bellies showing and that, like, no crop tops or whatever. That would be in their handbook, that would not be part of this policy. And I, I just want to make sure, you know, we're kind of, I feel like we're talking about this policy so that it takes off some of the, I feel like it's got to be stressful in an elementary school, you know, trying to worry about what the kids are wearing, are they wearing blue and white or black or whatever they're wearing? And I like the idea of eradicating that dress, you know, that uniform type policy. But, I don't know where I'm going, I just lost my train of thought.
Crop, crop tops and things like that.
Yes.
So it says specifically, has to be appropriate and...
Have fabric in the front and inside.
I saw that. I just, I just want to make sure that we will, you know, are we not going to, we're not really in some of the schools able to follow this policy, we just don't have the bandwidth. I mean, that's, we just, we don't have the...
We don't have the what to follow?
Bandwidth, no, the, the old ones.
Yes, the uniform, the uniform.
Uniform policy.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have the bandwidth, I'd rather the administrators, the staff be teaching our kids, like, I, it's not a good use of their, their time.
Yep.
So are we going to enforce the, you know, crop tops, no...
Yeah, we, like, like we did more recently, even though we didn't have the uniform policy, it was a little bit more flexible. And if there were jeans being worn that had a rip that was exposing something, that would be inappropriate, then we would make a phone call to a parent.
Okay.
The high school staff, if there's a shirt or something that, you know, had minimal material on it and needed a change, we would offer a shirt or say you have to have a parent. So we would continue, we have these issues and we would continue to enforce these issues, but we're not dealing now with, like, colors and...
Yeah, right, right. Okay, I just want to make sure that it, you know...
Yep.
How does this affect the academy?
Everyone's the same across the district.
So no uniforms in the academy?
No uniforms in the academy.
I think that's a mistake. Who, who, who had that brainstorm?
Well, we asked...
I think we all did, because we didn't want it to be divisive anymore.
You can't let a survey run this school district.
Well, the board asked for a survey, I provided with the data. We, they heard from Ms. Tori, who talked about the struggles since we loosened the uniform. The board asked me to bring a revised policy, so we're, so this is what I have in front of you, if you feel differently at this time or you feel like you need more discussion or...
We can't run this school district based on surveys because we'll just sit here and eat ice cream and candy all day. And that's a mistake. I can remember this, I was a board member, when the academy won the blue ribbon and it was presented by Senator Lieberman, two kids wore the wrong shirt. And our principal at the time didn't let them participate in the assembly, which, you know, I thought was nuts. But now we've progressed all the way to no uniform.
But no one's following you. They're not following it.
See, yeah, I, I have, I have a problem with this right from the very beginning and I'm just kind of getting into it, but...
Hold on, Erica.
They're, they're not following it because the adults aren't making them follow it. And I understand it's hard to do it. And once we relaxed it during COVID, it was hard to pull it back. I did all of that. If I was still there, I would want uniforms and I would enforce it. Because, but it's not good if you don't enforce it. Because then the parents that are enforcing it have a problem with the kids that aren't wearing it, so it can't be like that.
Or it's a vow.
It can't be like that. It has to be all or none.
My kid's going to wear it until early, but if no one else in her classroom is, it's...
And that's the, that's where the problem lies. That's where the problem lies. I, I thought that uniforms, you know, there's all, there's all the research of why uniforms are good. And New Haven public schools do it all the time, they all wear uniforms. And they don't seem to have a problem in New Haven. So, you know, I'm a proponent for uniforms, I'm kind of giving in on this because it's not a good policy if it's not enforced. And there's nothing that drives me more crazy is when we have policies that aren't enforced.
I'm in the same, oh.
Those people know before they apply to the academy what the rules are. They agree to it.
Yep.
All right? Enforcement shouldn't be an issue.
Because it's 2020, no one's...
Listen, if we have no speed limits on our road, what's, what's going to happen? We're going to take a survey, say, well, what, what should the speed limit be on North High Street?
A little different from safety there, though.
Forget it. Somebody has to run this place.
Because there's too many parents that are sending their kids in saying, "I don't care about the uniform policy, this is what you're going to school and..."
And you can't make me wear it.
They agreed to wear a uniform when they applied to the academy.
Yeah, legally, we really cannot force you.
So if it's that important to have them wearing it at the academy, then why is it not important to have everyone in them?
I'm not saying it is or isn't important, I'm saying you applied for the academy for students to go there, you agreed to it.
Okay, Erica, start. All right, Erica, go ahead. Um, okay, Erica, start. All right, Erica, go ahead.
Oh, I just said that. I just, I just think it's cool if they want to.
Can you talk to Mike?
You guys are trying to, I can't hear you.
And you're having kids that are really isolated or isolated.
We can't hear you at all, Erica.
She's saying, can I repeat what you said?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that the kids are being sent home, some of them were being sent home, and there's a day of absenteeism if the parent can't come get them or whatever. And it kind of creates, you know, here we are making headway with absenteeism.
We never sent them home.
We never, ever.
Shouldn't they have shirts sitting there?
We had shirts. We have, we had a whole closet.
Here's, here's my thought on that.
No way.
I think that kids are ostracized for so many different reasons. And, and if, I really, as much as I enjoy, I like the uniforms. My children wore them. I mean, I had no problem with that. If you make them too strict, oh, today is, is, you know, you weren't wearing the right color cap. It's, at some point, it was very strict. And things were loosened a little bit where it was just t-shirt and then you added, you know, other things. As long as you were in the color and whatever. I thought that was fine. But I, I, I hear both sides of this too, but?
I think at this point?
You can't force kids or their parents to do that at this point.
We, we did. We did do it.
But I don't think legally you can do that anymore.
I think at this point, it's gone too far.
Yeah.
It's too far. It's not being enforced. It's, I think it's going to be too difficult to pull it back now. I'm sad that it wasn't enforced because, like I said, New Haven Public Schools do it. We could have done it, but we chose not to. So I think at this point, we have to get rid of it because I?
Well, for the past three years, when I picked up my kid, there might be three or four kids, the entire class, that were wearing a uniform.
I agree with you.
It wasn't enforced.
Well, because we relaxed the policy during COVID.
It was before COVID.
And, you know, and, and when you have maybe five or three, five kids a day that you're dealing with, but when you start relaxing it, you pull it back, and it's gone past the tipping point, it consumes too much of the time to try to address it. So, you know, but the board sets policy, so, you know, this is just an, an option and a suggestion for you.
Their policies should be managed by practice.
I don't know. Listen, our society doesn't function like that. We have, you know, our own gas stations and you can't sell tobacco if you're under this age and this if you're under that age and?
Well, that's a state law.
That's right.
There is no law for uniforms.
It has to be enforced.
But there's no law for it.
I mean, you know, we have a big, large book of policies.
We're not lawyers.
Legally, they can wear whatever they like as long as they're covering, right? Genital and breasts.
And as long as there's nothing?
According to what you're saying, there's no law? So I guess our policies, they can come in school and date it if they want.
No.
According to what you're saying.
No, apparently they don't use that here.
I don't know. I think it's a mistake. I think the academy over time here is deteriorating into just a regular school. It's a mistake. It makes me sad.
I would like to see it remain in the academy. As I've said before, I think it's part of the culture there. I, but I also agree with?
You wind up the survey then, right?
No, I, no, but even aside, like, that's what people want, but, but also, I just look at, like, the point that Mary Ann said. It's not being enforced. We don't really, I'd rather, you know, we spend time teaching the kids than worrying about what they're wearing. So, so we have limited resources. Let's spend the resources where it matters. Like, let's put the money where it needs to go.
Anybody have any, sorry, we're running over time. And I just wanted to ensure we could pick this up back in our regular session.
Yeah.
Right? I don't think anyone's saying anything different.
No.
At all.
Thank you for your input. Uh, did we do all of it? Yes. Okay.
Sorry, let me give it, sorry, let me give the message out. So that's it, right? That's the, the score shop's over? Yes. Ready to start the meeting?
Ready.
Call to order this evening's meeting, and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call attendance, please. Oh, we don't have anyone to do it?
That's me, that's me. I'm coming. Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Longo? Mr. Hennessy?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Putney?
Here.
Ms. Santiago? Mr. Stacy? Ms. Torello?
Here.
Dr. Delucia?
Here.
Okay. For my report this evening, update, we did just complete the administrator's contract. It's been signed, and hopefully, we will have that within a month just because it's breaking order to be ratified. Also, I want to remind everyone of the email I sent for the professional development for board members. I would highly recommend, if you can, to take advantage of it. It's an hour, it's virtual, and it really can help with quite a few things, especially finance pieces, budget. There, there's a lot of different ones that you can look into.
I don't remember getting any, you know?
I, I send it. I send it to everybody.
How long ago was that? How long ago was it, Michelle?
About three weeks ago.
Oh, that's probably why. Okay.
So, I'm, I was just saying, if you, if you can and you could spare your lunchtime, maybe once over the next five months, it would be really helpful. It would help you as well as the board in general. Always helps to learn something new. Okay. Other than that, I hope everyone is enjoying their summer. Have you been, hopefully, you've been reviewing the update and newsletter sent by the superintendent? I thought there was a lot of good information in it. And that's all I have. Committee reports.
Tia?
Oh, I just kind of, I stole, I did.
Choir, right? Happy to say you're agreeing. You made some headway.
And mid-management?
Yes, mid-management and tech is next for negotiations.
Policy. As you know, we have a few policies before us this evening. I think we are pretty much up to date practically. There's, I don't think there should be any policies prior to 2020, right? Did we get all of them?
That's correct.
Yeah.
There might be one or two little stragglers, but we'll, we're very close.
In 2013, there were policies with the date 1987 on them. So I feel really good about this, okay? We're only, you know, 2020 is the oldest.
Probably, it's hard to.
So, we have made some great strides with policy. And especially trying to align it with practice. I think that is the most important thing. It's, doesn't make sense to have something there if we're not gonna be using it. Okay. And Karen Arts?
I have nothing exciting for the summertime. The community theater.
Oh, you still have an arts commission?
Yeah, we can touch on that, but they have, the production that's coming up. I don't have the dates off the top of my head. August 3rd. Yeah, it was on the sign out front.
August 3rd is for one, and I think the other one?
Oh, happened already.
The other one happened.
That happened last?
Oh, it happened. Okay. I know one's coming up on August 3rd. That's the only one I remember.
What's the title of the one in August?
The seventh. That's a Disney villains, children.
Disney Junior, right? Is it a junior production?
No, it's like the, I think it's like the children of the Disney characters.
Yes.
And Jack is now here this evening to give us our sport updates.
Okay. I can give you a small sport update. We've had some of our fall sports teams on campus practicing with coaches due to the change in the regulation for contact time. And it's kind of been nice to drive up in the mornings and see the kids coming off the field after a morning workout and actually being able to play with a ball with their own coach. So hopefully, that will serve them really well moving into the fall season.
It's really great that I, the coaches want to do that, right? You know, like, they're participating. They want to put in extra time and energy. That's great.
It is. And, you know, I've run, I've talked and ran into a couple of parents who say that the kids really, really like it, and they love coming in and lifting the weights, and that they also like the conditioning, but they also like the fact that they actually can scrimmage and play a sport with the ball. So, um, I think the kids are really enjoying it as well. Even though it has been super, super hot.
Okay. So Erica, then I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite the Professional Development and Evaluation Committee Chairs, Amelia Catarano and Lisa Belius, to come and present on the new Professional Development and Educator Growth Plan. Welcome, and thank you for being here this evening.
Good evening, Nick. Amelia Catarano is here with me tonight. She is the co-chair. She's an English teacher at the high school, but she's also the co-chair of the Professional Development and Evaluation Committee. And we also have Christina Di Crescenzo here in the audience. You're welcome to join us if you would like. Who was on the PDAC committee as well. So, as you may or may not know, we, as a member of a Connecticut school, we had to rewrite our Professional Development and Evaluation Plan for next year. The state issued new guidelines. And we met all of last year, worked very hard as a committee to create a plan that was in alignment with the state guidelines, but also that met the needs of our district. And we're gonna talk a little bit about that. So?
It's been my unique pleasure to serve as co-chair of this working group and have the support of the following individuals who devoted an incredible number of hours and energy to write this really thoughtful plan. And it took us, as Lisa said, most of the year last year, and I want to make sure that they get a moment of recognition as well. So we got Erica Forti serving as my co-chair for a large amount of the time, Lisa Belius, as well as my co-chair, Michael Archambeau, teacher and EHA president, Christopher Brown, principal from Tattle School, Lisa Brown, teacher from Ferrara School, Julie Church, family engagement coordinator, Laura DeConte, teacher from East Haven Adult Education, Christina Di Crescenzo, special education coordinator, six through 12, Gennaro Gavlerdi, teacher at JMMS, Jessica Godiosso, social worker, 82JES, Dr. Joe Marangello, social studies instructional leader, six through 12, Renee McIntyre, teacher at Tattle School, Dana Palmieri, teacher at East Haven Academy, Jerelyn Perez, teacher at Monoglin, Gina Rosino, teacher and instructional coach at Dear Run, Jennifer San Giavani, teacher at Dear Run, Sarah Santos, teacher at Ferrara, Nathaniel Teskra, assistant principal at JMMS, Rosa Velasquez, art student coordinator at Overbrook, and Letitia Marrero's Dear Run career professional. Throughout this entire process, the, the group, because it was so large, we wanted to have a way that ensured that everyone had a voice. So we used a consensus protocol, which included a five-point scale and was anonymous, but required unanimous approval of everyone being able to live with the content of the plan or the piece of the plan or the sentence that we were debating at the time without any more than just minor reservations. And this provided us a unique opportunity to have really thoughtful discussions about larger sections and smaller sections and for every member of the committee, which spanned across the district in different schools and different, like, age ranges from six through 12 to K through five, for everyone to have a voice at the table.
So this is the theory of action that we created when we began our work together. And the theory of action is fully aligned with the district's theory of action, the superintendent's theory of action, and grounded in the idea that we're all learners, that we all benefit from feedback, and that if we embrace opportunities to grow as educators, that our students will benefit from that. So our theory of action is really grounded in our vision of the graduate and grounded in a growth mindset, which we're gonna talk much more about. So, growth mindset is something we've all heard about, and it was an idea that we went back to at the beginning of our work, really talking about the importance of people embracing feedback and not resisting it. The leader plan for administrators mirrors our teacher plan with the same focus on continuous improvement. And our hope is that we reframe the challenges of the, reframe our challenges as we're working in our schools, and that if we are framing our challenges as opportunities for growth, that will better impact our students. We want our students to believe that they can grow and change. We want our teachers and administrators to feel the same. So this support plan encourages teachers and administrators to embrace opportunities to learn new things, embrace opportunities to try new things, even if it isn't overwhelmingly successful the first time that you do something. And collect feedback, grow from that, adjust, refine, and continue to work on things that will be in the best interest of our students. So, what does continuous learning look like? It's not just the work that we do every day in classrooms. It's professional development days. It's collaboration time during the school day. It's the data and curriculum meetings that teachers take part in as part of our monthly meeting cycle. It's embedded opportunities with coaches, instructional coaches. We are going to encourage all leaders, and this work has already started, that every meeting is an opportunity that should be centered in an oppor, in, in opportunities for new learning and growth for the people sitting in front of you. Attendance at meetings, attendance at professional development is expected, and real participation in those days. Active engagement is really important, and that is going to become part of the success criteria for this plan, is that people are engaging in opportunities to learn and grow. And the other thing that we're really trying to focus on is the evaluator as a learning partner, where they're developing a relationship, where feedback is better received, and where feedback is seen as a way to help the teacher grow so that students will also grow and learn more.
We have centered our plan around the spirit of continuous improvement, which allows for all members of the district community to be growing as models for our students. We want, we want to always be working as a district team to encourage growth that will impact our students' achievement. And the mindset of our plan inspires intellectual risk-taking, collaboration, exploration of new ideas and approaches in support of student growth and achievement.
So all leaders in East Haven Public Schools should be able to participate in meaningful professional learning and evaluation that positively impacts their ability to lead and evaluate each East Haven Public Schools educators. We recognize as part of our discussions that we need to provide more professional learning opportunities for our administrators as well as our teachers. In order for our teachers to learn and grow, we have to make sure that they are receiving feedback and opportunities that are aligned with the work that they're doing every day. So we want our administrators to be continuing to seek those opportunities to learn and grow as well. Okay, so the leader process. Leaders will be evaluated in a way to support the growth and development of all educators and students in the district. So this will include site visits. Administrators will have?
So in order to support all of our leaders, we broke down the process for our leaders to be observed and evaluated into two cohorts, and that will ensure that non-tenured leaders will receive more continuous support from their evaluator with a focus on that growth mindset and the learning process. And this will have a direct positive impact on the educators who will be supported and evaluated by these newer non-tenured teachers. Those tenured leaders will have just a little bit less of a process that's laid out, but still have available to them all of the supports from the other administrators and leaders in our district. And as we've said before, the educator evaluation plan and support plan mirrors the leader evaluation and support plan. So all EHPSS educators are thoughtful partners and participants in professional learning in order to improve the district, school community, and maximize student growth and development. As we talked about with the leader plan, this is a shift in our mindset that there are only certain times and certain PD expectations where we have to participate and that that provides the growth for us as educators. We are shifting our mindset as a district so that all meetings, all collaboration times, data teams, opportunities in professional, our opportunities in professional learning. And we are shifting and really encouraging all teachers and leaders as well to be active participants in all aspects of our professional responsibilities. So it is the role of the EHPSS educator to participate in the continuous learning opportunities for professional growth in order to support the district and student achievement. And that includes the opportunities built into our workday, as we talked about, data team meetings, collaboration meetings, after-school meetings, PPTs, 504s, professional learning days, and the after-hour work that all educators and support staff engage in, which are professional responsibilities, and those are also opportunities for individualized learning. And we recognize that this is a reset in our expectations for our leaders and educators, and a reminder of why we have these collaborative times built into our schedule.
So this is just a more detailed look at the timeline for the evaluation process and the goal-setting process for educators. Teachers will have clear guidelines and deadlines for goal-setting, for mid-year conferences to review their progress, and an end-of-year reflection. This is similar to the process that we have in place now. I think the biggest change in terms of the goal-setting process is that teachers will be coming at the mid-year, and it might be that they are really making a big adjustment in their goals if something isn't working. They may be meeting with someone else because they may have worked on a collaborative goal. They may be establishing a three-year goal with clear benchmarks at the end of each year that they're trying to achieve, to really do something more deeply rather than recreating a new path every year. So the process will look the same, but what may happen in that process is going to be a little different.
So the cohorts outlined here are similar to the leader cohorts where they are broken down by the amount of tenure essentially. So in cohort one, we have teachers newer to East Haven Public Schools in their first two years, in cohort two, we have teachers in years three and four, and they're, but they're still non-tenured, and then in cohort three, we have tenured teachers. And we really wanted to break this down in order to have the, all members of the East Haven Public School community be able to build relationships that are collaborative and provide a partnership in teaching and learning and the processes that will inspire growth mindset between educator and evaluator. The new teachers will have more of an opportunity for dialogue with their evaluator, which is focused on growth because of the requirements of their cohort. And veteran teachers will receive feedback from observations, but they may also receive feedback based on their participation and leadership in curriculum meetings, professional learning facilitation, planning meetings, or collegial work with their peers. And new teacher feedback is going to be hopefully more focused at the classroom level, as we want to ensure that their work is, in the classroom, is solid. And we're hoping that as we have veteran teachers who demonstrated ongoing, consistent patterns of strong instructional practice, that feedback might be able to shift towards other areas to help them continue growing in the best possible way. And we just want to make sure that all of the teachers in our district are able to get the feedback that they need to keep growing rather than like getting the same feedback every year or staying the same.
So you've heard the word feedback a lot, and what feedback looked like for teachers under our previous plan, and this was true across the state, was a score. It was, you went and observed a teacher and collected evidence and aligned that evidence to particular areas of a rubric, and then teachers would receive a score in each of those areas. And it was really demotivating for many teachers to be looking at scores. Some teachers who wanted to have the highest score in every category all the time and were really upset when they didn't, others that were really upset if there was even one area where they weren't provided feedback that there were possibilities for growth. And it was just really a struggle, and it wasn't just a struggle here, they found this when they were trying to set the new guidelines for the state, that those scores really were getting in the way of teachers receiving the feedback in the spirit with which it was intended. And so the scoring model is going away. It is not in CEA's recommendations and it is not in the state's recommendations. So Amelia's going to talk a little bit about what the new observation form might look like, but informal and informal observations, evaluators will still be collecting evidence, they will still be aligning that to particular areas of practice, will be using the same model of best practices from the Danielson framework, but they will not receive a score on a rubric in the same way that they did. So we're hoping that that's going to shift the conversation more to what's the next step for you as a teacher? How do you continue to grow and improve rather than I was a two, or a three, or a four?
So to continue with that, this would be a sample of what a teacher would see on their end when they receive some feedback. So in this particular area, this is about applying knowledge of content and pedagogy, you would have, we have three elements of success that are being looked at, and the teacher will receive evidence statements of exactly what happened or what was said in their classroom that the leader, the evaluator will be scripting for them, and then comments and additional notes about those evidence statements or feedback so that they can kind of help make sense of what those evidence statements really mean. And the elements of success would really be checked or not checked. And at any given time, when you walk into a classroom or a meeting for a guidance counselor, for example, because that can also be a place that you observe an educator, you won't see all of the criteria, and you shouldn't probably see all the criteria in a 10-minute snippet of a classroom, right? So if it's checked, then that's something that was seen and was proficient, or you have some comments and additional notes that can help you move forward. And then you will see, at the end of the entire observation, all of the domains will be scored on only two levels. So a teacher will be either established or in process, that they're demonstrating that successful evidence in that area, and can take some steps to continue to grow, and will have some steps laid out of how they can continue to grow, or that they are not demonstrating, yeah, not yet, yes, not yet, thank you.
So it's in process or?
So established and in process is one, and not yet is the other. So the idea is that it's not even delineating between the established and the in-process because everybody is going to get a list of action steps, of recommendations for how to continue growing and how to keep moving forward, because we want to really highlight that idea that try some new things and keep going forward, and yes, you might have done some really awesome things, and that's great, and that's established, but it takes away some of that anxiety that Lisa talked about, myself, right, as an educator, like trying to keep getting that four that used to be the highest level of scoring, that just felt unattainable at times. So at the end, the leader will list overall strengths, which we thought was really helpful to be able to highlight everyone's great things that they're doing, and then priorities for next steps and/or professional learning. So we really want to tie in the professional learning with the observations and evaluation.
So growth criteria, this is a piece that has to be included at the end of the year. So this is the process that evaluators and teachers will go through together at their end-of-year conference to kind of determine, did you successfully meet the elements of the plan this year, or did you not successfully meet the elements of the plan this year? And it's one or the other. You either have successfully met and successfully completed the plan this year, or you did not. So to successfully complete that, it is the active engagement in your professional responsibilities and professional learning for the year, it includes a review of your evaluation, it looks at the impact of your work on students, on the school community, on whatever you're reflecting on depending on what your goal is. So this is kind of a comprehensive look at the end of the year at where you are, and you have to meet both bullet points in order to have successfully completed the process for the year.
Lisa, is there a form for that at the end of the year?
Yes.
Like, okay, there is.
There's a checkbox that we have to, they will complete a reflection where they will reflect on their goals, they will reflect on their observations, and they have to include their own next steps for learning as part of this now. So what is the next thing you need to do after having looked at your own data or student achievement results, your own collaboration with your peers, your own observations, and what will be those next steps for next year?
And continuing in the spirit of the growth mindset, the new plan breaks down three dynamic tiers of support that are increasingly formalized. So at each tier, the focus is on high-quality feedback and professional learning opportunities that will help all educators to improve their practice over time. And as Lisa said, each year, all educators will set their growth goal, and evaluators will observe the teachers for a minimum, the previously discussed number of times. And educators should be making progress towards their goals and demonstrating the growth mindset toward the feedback that they received. However, at any point in the year, or in their profession, a teacher, an educator, might be provided, or should be provided, I apologize, with tier-one supports. That is a basic level of support that we are saying that all evaluators should be providing all educators in this district because it is just good practice to provide professional learning, provide feedback on their evaluations, and have discussions to encourage next steps. And if the teacher or if the educator is demonstrating a difficulty in a particular area or a couple of areas, the evaluator might increase the amount of support at tier-two or tier-three levels, and that can be ongoing throughout this school year. And a pattern of persistent lack of growth or not reflecting on their growth, or a resistance to the growth-oriented feedback will lead to more advanced levels of support. So this is how we are hoping to hold our teachers accountable while also holding our district accountable for giving them the support to keep growing, right? So we're agreeing that everybody's going to be getting the support so that we can keep growing, and that an educator is agreeing to be a part of the process, to take that feedback, to take that support and to grow.
So this may not look like it was a year's worth of work, but it was a year's worth of work. There were a lot of conversations, it was a lot of collaboration and compromise, there were definitely times where we were not all in agreement about the direction that we wanted to go with some of these things, and we did go through that consensus protocol every step of the way to make sure that we were all in agreement, that we could, we could live with this, and we could try it for a year, and we will continue to meet next year and evaluate how this is going, be collecting feedback from administrators and teachers in an ongoing way to see what's working and what's not working, and then we will continue to fine-tune and make adjustments over the course of the year and next year for resubmission at the end of next year. So Adam is going to talk a little bit now about our new approach to professional learning next year and how that fits into this.
Can I ask a question before we move on?
Sure.
So I'm wondering how much professional learning the administrators have received, because we know none of that will work unless teachers get quality feedback. So what happened there, or what is happening there?
So Adam and I have monthly community of practice meetings with all of the administrators, and our approach next year is going to be that a significant portion of those meetings next year will be spent on calibration, review, feedback work, sharing our processes, and really engaging in that work as a team, and looking at where everyone is in their process, how are we doing keeping up with the deadlines and getting these in, because if teachers aren't getting feedback, we can't expect change, we can't expect improvement. And it is hard, you know, as a building leader, you have all intentions of getting into classrooms, and then, you know, there's an emergency in your building. But balancing the urgent and the important is a really vital part of the work.
So you and Adam will be reviewing those?
That's been part of our whole conversation through PDEAC, this process, that has been one of the sticking points, if I may.
Yeah, it's came through loud and clear.
I think that is so, so important, and the deadlines, that everyone meets the deadlines so it's fair and consistent throughout the district for everybody.
Yes.
I also think that it doesn't need to stand alone in just a community of practice. When we look at some of our other work in our professional learning, like the science of reading, their job-embedded coaching for principals in their buildings on how to look at small group instruction, and the routines and structures that make it a high-quality, effective, small-group instruction activity, and teaching principals how to look at that, evaluate that, and translate that into high-quality feedback. So yes, it's good to do it the community of practice and talk about it, but closing the knowing-doing gap by using some of our initiatives, like the science of reading, and embedding it in principals' days through coaching that we've done with the Hill for Literacy. And I use that as a small example, we have a lot of other things that we're doing with principals that we could capitalize on in the buildings to give them better coaching in their own schools, in their own classrooms, to be able to provide higher levels and better and more effective feedback.
And then be looking for evidence of that in classrooms and in schools. So I think that's a key part of the plan, is that if you're engaging in professional development, it doesn't end when the day ends. The expectation is that this is something that we think is important for practice on the leader's side and the teacher's side. So that is, that is one of the things that is going to determine whether or not you are successful or not successful in completing the plan for the year, is that you're executing and embedding it in principals' days through coaching that we've done with the Hill for Literacy. And I use that as a small example. We have a lot of other things that we're doing with principals that we could capitalize on in the buildings to give them better coaching in their own schools, in their own classrooms, to be able to provide higher levels and better and more effective feedback. And then be looking for evidence of that in classrooms and in schools. So I think that's a key part of the plan is that if you're engaging in professional development, it doesn't end when the day ends. The expectation is that this is something that we think is important for practice on the leader's side and the teacher's side. So that is one of the things that is going to determine whether or not you are successful or not successful in completing the plan for the year, is that you're executing those things or making an attempt to execute those things in your buildings.
Because I know we have quite a few new administrators. And I'm thinking about way back when, when we first started this plan and we had that training hours and hours and hours.
Hours and hours.
A whole week of training. And I'm not sure if new administrators got that training, but that was really useful. Unless they get that training, they're not going to be able to provide that quality feedback.
And I think ensuring that the ongoing site visits, those informals, formal visits, the review of practice for leaders is integral to the work as well, right? Like that ensures that we're meeting those components.
Thank you.
To you.
You might be getting to this as well, but the plan of action for a lot of times said, oh, you gotta set your goals and then September, October, November. Before you know it, you know, everybody's backed up because, well, I didn't, you know, I was absent that day, so now I have to go next week or the week after. That sometimes pushes everything, you know, gets everything kind of, you know, going haywire. But your tier-one, your tier-two and tier-three supports, are they going to be readily available? Are you going to be using your coaches, your intervention specialists? And, you know, are those being?
From day one.
From day one.
And we don't believe, like, it is not part of the philosophy of the plan that administrators won't begin visiting classrooms until after goal-setting is done. Those two things can be separate. They might cross over, but they're, if teachers are in classrooms teaching, then administrators can be in classrooms observing.
That's right.
And I think that that's a little bit of a shift just in practice that we're hoping to communicate very clearly.
And so Lisa and Amelia alluded to professional learning really is at the heart of this plan and at the heart of how we think about the growth mindset. We talked about this just a little bit in June and we wanted to share it in connection to the plan because we saw this as an opportunity to really re-envision professional learning. And professional learning is so much more than a PD day. It is embedded throughout all that we do as educators. But we do see that these district days can provide an anchor for sustained learning. So we have remapped it so that our three professional learning days that are district-led, district-sponsored, happen in August, November, and January now. And the guiding principle for a redesign was really depth over breadth. Instead of like selecting from the menu, visiting something for an hour and moving on, so we really wanted to provide an opportunity to deepen that learning, provide connection both within and across schools to think about how we build up East Haven as a professional learning community on the whole, even though there are smaller pockets that exist at schools and within schools. And to think about learning through a cyclical process where we are engaging in some new content, planning for implementation, going and enacting the learning in classrooms with students, and then coming back and reflecting on that in the company of others. And so when we introduced the plan to staff in May, we also used it as an opportunity to get feedback on offerings. We use that to refine. And then evaluators and certificated staff have already worked collaboratively through end-of-year meetings to identify their pathway for the year. And we've been mapping that out all summer long. It was brought up and we wanted to mention too that we have planned a paraprofessional pathway as well that is an opportunity for some core learning that is consistent across individuals, but some spaces to individualize as well. And then our learning pathways, there's 12 here plus an opportunity for educators to design their own pathway depending on where they're at in their growth process. But these 12 offerings are really a representation of keeping current with state policies. So for example, play-based learning being implemented or the science of reading. It responds to what educators are saying are needs from a curriculum standpoint, like re-engaging in social studies instruction or writing instruction. And also opportunities for more cross-cutting concepts, like making sure our new educators have a home base and a space to make connections and develop their practice, but also to strengthen, say, instruction for multilingual learners and our diverse populations in East Haven. So we're excited about this, but it's definitely an exercise in new learning at the systems level as well.
And so our next steps, we're going to take this growth mindset and hope that everybody embraces it in the fall. We've had good feedback so far, but we've been looking at data. People will start to establish goals. We're going to implement the plan, collect some data, make adjustments. And we're really excited about it. So it's a different approach and we can't wait.
Will you be administering like impact surveys throughout the year following PD?
We are.
We always do that.
Yeah. Yeah, there will be a cycle with each session and those will be used to inform redesign for the upcoming sessions. Because there's really a benefit where the same core group is coming back together again. So they can really impact what that looks like the next time they show up. And we think that'll feel more responsive and respectful.
And the pathways is actually in response to feedback we've gotten that you provide a menu day and people say, you know, I went to this session, but I really wish I could have gone to that. Or I did this, but the next time it's onto something else and I wish I could have gotten more of that. So we've been trying to look at the feedback that we've received on professional learning sessions, which has been very positive, but try to make an adjustment that would help teachers more at the classroom application.
Just be that little tweak that you make there is all the difference. That you might not even think is a big deal, but it could be, right?
And then mapping that learning onto what are, how's it changing outcomes for students, right? And opportunities in the classroom. And so that's another component that we'll be looking into.
I like that, I mean, the first part of it really is typical kind of performance management, right? And I really appreciate that you guys chose to call it professional development versus performance management. Like that's a more positive, you know, you're moving forward and I really like that you did that. I kind of have questions about, you know, it sounds like there's going to be peer feedback, you know, feedback on all different levels. And the lack of like substitutes, I am worried, like staffing, how that could negatively impact your ability to provide feedback, you know? I want to ensure that you guys have what you need and that this is, sounds like a really well-called-out plan and I want to see it move forward and be successful. I also want to know, like, I see that, you know, you have professional development, like how to be a better teacher, how to work in the classroom, for administrators, how to be a better administrator. But what kind of, what are you going to implement for like the teacher that may want to become an instructional leader or the instructional leader that may want to become, like, move up into a different part of the, you know, district or other districts? I mean, you know.
It's interesting that you asked. Do you want to talk a little bit about?
Yeah, I can. One of the pathways was really in response to that. And so one of the pathways is emerging teacher leaders, which is we are bringing in some support from Central Connecticut State University to do some assessments on like readiness for leadership, to help target some individual areas of growth, but then to design and implement action research projects back in their sites, which is really embedded opportunities for learning that kind of even go beyond the pathways to, say, an administrator credential, but really taking on leadership at any layer and level of the system. So we're excited about that, but we think there will be a lot of learning that comes out of that space that we continue to refine each year.
And as long as it's student-focused, you want to see the outcomes.
Right.
For the children, success, obviously.
The personalized learning pathway also is a way if a teacher or an administrator has a goal that they really want to work on, that's really designed at learning more about something that's really personal to them in terms of their practice. They created their own theory of action and an outline of a plan for the year next year and they can engage in their own personalized learning. So we're going through those submissions as well. And it's very interesting, some of the people, some of the things people have said they want to work on. Is there, you know, I know we have the PD days and this isn't really that, but it is, it's all part of the same plan. So during those PD days, are they, I see you have some that you mentioned are district-wide. Do the teachers or really administrators, everyone ever have like the opportunity on those PD days to just kind of go to an online conference? Or are there any individualized that are not like the whole school? Or they have the opportunity for it to be flexible towards their individual? Yeah, so the pathways that Adam talked about, teachers had to choose two when they met with their evaluator at the end of the year. So they picked the areas that they really wanted to learn more about. So if there was a teacher that really wants to implement building-thinking classrooms and they haven't had any experience yet, there's a pathway for that. And they will get three sessions over the course of the year in building-thinking classrooms. There's also an advanced pathway for that for people that had some of that training already and want to learn about grading in the thinking classrooms model or designing assessments in that model. We had some music and art teachers who really wanted to be able to visit Western Connecticut, which does a big workshop on Election Day for music teachers in the state. And there was another common session that they identified that they wanted to go to. So if they proposed that as a personalized pathway, our culinary teachers have three different sites, a farm-to-tables company that, no, it's not a company, but a consortium that they're going to go and visit. They're going to go to Gateway and look at their facilities there and meet with their person to talk about how to better align our programs here. So it really opened up very widely the opportunities for all teachers to at least share what they needed so that we could try to help them get there.
I think the other part I hear in your question too is like beyond those three days, are there other opportunities? And there is a mechanism in place where educators can work with their building leader, connect with our office to seek out additional opportunities that would support it.
I just, I want to make sure, you know, I know teachers do a lot of work at home and I don't want more additional personal time. You know, I just want to make sure their VP for their time is compensated and it's during the school hours or during the PD day, that kind of thing.
I think to just add on just a little bit to that point, Lisa talked about how they could identify these areas. And I think that if this is a successful first year with this, then I think we'll see even more next year from teachers of finding those opportunities of their own professional development and taking off some of the load of doing the professional development on their own time over the summer or things like that. And be able to collaborate, like coordinate that a little bit better. So I do think that there's continued opportunity for growth within this process that we've designed as well.
Thank you so much for your work on this. It's really great. Thank you. Thank you. Very well done. They worked very hard, as you can see. It's extremely coordinated and thoughtful and very responsive to the feedback and input that they receive from both administrators, teachers, and paraprofessionals. So thank you very much. We appreciate it. And thank you to the other PDAC members for being here today. Thank you, Christina and Julie.
And Julie?
Yes.
All right. See you later.
See how short I can be. So just wanted to provide a quick update on our summer projects. Although we don't have the fiscal resources we've had in the past to do some summer work, we are still working hard to, there's many classroom moves that we're making from building to building that our maintenance team and custodial staff are working hard on. More specifically, there's a larger classroom renovation going on at the Academy to suit an ABA program change that is coming over based on attendance. So that is encompassing new flooring, new bathrooms, new lighting for that classroom set is all-encompassing and all the moves on that floor that are taking place. While the classrooms are empty, we are updating all of those rooms with paint and updating lighting as needed. So that's a larger project going on at that one building. We are continuing our JMS stage flooring, using our rental floors. That was our last piece of the renovation at JMS. Taking some of the electrical out there, left some larger holes and some splintered wood on the stage. So we have the stage company coming out that did the installation. They'll be replacing the floor with the proper material and it'll be a black stage. So that facility will be fully up to date before we enter the school year. Up at the high school, we are making an upgrade to our rear projector. It is something that our drama club, the arts commission, and many of our, many of our companies that rent the facility request, and we have to go out and rent ourselves. So it is a project that will pay for itself within a couple of months and provide our students and staff an upgrade that they've been asking for. So we are doing that as well. That is coming in bits and pieces. JMS, we are upgrading security doors and created a vestibule in front of the security desk. And we will now be installing some card swipes there as well to finish that job. And as Ernie's saying, I don't want to bring it up, but we are getting our boilers cleaned for the coming here, getting ahead of that and getting that scheduled, so we are not behind schedule there. And just the normal maintenance, you hear some noise going on above your head. The teams are here cleaning the floors and waxing the floors and getting the schools ready. That is going on at all of our built, all of our built buildings. And you know, whenever we have time, we are painting a fresh coat of paint and bringing a navy blue look. A lot of our buildings, if you walk in, had either a, like a red-magenta color painted on the sills and we are navy and gold. So we are painting that all navy to bring in East Haven look across the district. So as we have some downtime, we are painting all of that navy blue. And as we get closer to the year, we'll spruce up our mulch and we'll make sure that our outside facilities look good. So when the school year comes along, we are looking fresh. But just so you know, there is a lot going on, even though the financial resources, again, aren't what they used to be. We are doing a lot of our work in-house. All our plumbing work is done by our maintenance team who has a specialty there. So we are making significant changes over the summer and hopefully all will be done before the start of school. Next is a solar update. We have a date for a public comment on August 6th. Last month, I went to a board of finance meeting to move forward to town council for approval of an $8 million lease buyback program, which will allow us to front the money for the leasing of the solar devices, plus the roofing upgrades for all. The only buildings not included would be the Academy and Mamawgan, and that's just at this point in time. They are in the next round of upgrades. And if they are approved, the work is so minimal for those roofs that with the solar upgrades, it is more of a net-zero cost. So there'd be no need to upgrade the amount that we would be borrowing from the bank. So it moved from board of finance to town council. Town council set a public hearing date of August 6th. And there's a meeting right after that for them to vote on. So I will be attending that meeting on August 6th to present an up-to-date model from the company that will reflect the final savings based on current models and the financing terms. And then hopefully, right after that meeting, it will be approved. And then at that point, the roofing company can start purchasing materials and scheduling. It has been pushed back a few months from when we last spoke. So we are not as hopeful of getting this roof done before snow falls, but we're hoping to get the major parts that are at risk done and finish the roof as the seasons progress. But it seems to be moving full steam ahead, so that's a positive note for us. And then beyond that update, the health insurance report is in front of you tonight. This is as of, I gave you an up-to-date as of where we stood this week. We still have some stragglers coming in for the month of June as doctors submit their bills. So that position may change, but this is our outlook as we stand here. And then lastly, invoices and POs. You see, you're seeing a bunch of reports because we haven't had a meeting and we've run, we've had a few runs throughout the last month. And you're also seeing a split year. You're seeing some bills from finishing on the '23, '24 year and starting the '24, '25 year. And the invoice and POs over $7,000 report is large this time because we are again setting up our blank POs for the upcoming year. So you're seeing all our UI bill, just the blankets for UI bills, water, water bills, anything that we know of, transportation bills. So you'll see that now and probably the next meeting as well as the summer months come along and we start preparing for the school year to come along, you'll see those as we progress. So it's been a busy summer so far and I expect it to remain a bit busy summer for us as we get to the school year. But all is well and we look for a smooth sail as we approach the first day of school.
I have some questions.
Yeah.
Storage containers.
Yes.
So I'm curious what's in the containers. Because I remember when I was there, they were loaded with furniture. Are they still loaded with furniture?
So they've been condensed. So they are now all housed at the lot across from the academy. You'll see there's, there's I think seven of them there. Two of them are for maintenance and that's where they, they house some of the sanders, the snow blowers. And they're, they don't have a shop, so they use two of those. The ones that had the furniture, we took an inventory of. A lot of the furniture was damaged beyond repair.
It was.
So that was tossed last summer.
Okay.
And they were condensed into those spots. So the district, if somebody calls and says we need a few desks, we go to a generic. Instead of saying, this is my building's desks, it's more of like a localized of where we have some furniture.
But it's all, it's all good furniture that's left?
The furniture there is, is good, is good.
Okay.
And any, any chance we have when we, when it gets close to condensing to another unit, we have.
Okay.
I think over the last few months, we've gotten rid of three from schools ready.
Okay. And Bob, I have a question for you. Magnet School evaluations, nine thousand dollars done by a retired school psychologist. So I remember back in, you know, several years ago, that we had school psychologists assigned to out of placement schools to do evaluations. Is that no longer happening?
We have three hundred and eighty some odd kids at Magnet Schools with over a hundred and ten special ed kids. So that number would be difficult to manage with our in-house folks.
One hundred special ed outplaced?
Hundred and ten.
At Magnet Schools?
At Magnet Schools.
So we're going to continue to see this high number then?
You're going to continue to see evaluations when they're due as required by law every three years.
Do, do our school psychologists go out and do some of those evaluations?
Some of them they do.
So every school psychologist is assigned a certain number of outplaced students?
For specific tests, we do assign some of our school psychologists with specific kids because the testing expertise of some of our in-house psychologists exceeds that of the individual you're speaking about.
So I know you're saying there's a hundred and ten students, but there's not a hundred and ten students that need to be evaluated every year?
That's correct, but that's, as you know, they come up on a triennial basis, so it's still, it's still a good number.
I just hope that we're using our in-house psychologists as much as possible because everyone's caseload has increased this year. Teachers have much larger classrooms. So I'd like to hopefully see that those psychologists are used as much as possible to kind of reduce this number as much as we can.
Okay. Everyone's caseload has increased. Yes.
Okay. And I'm not sure, I have a question about the hires and the costs. Can I ask that now or do you want me to wait?
Yeah. And do you get the updated?
I did, I did, yes. So RJ, I don't know if you were able to get, get me. Okay, that's great. I'd like to see that.
Yep.
And Erica, I'm wondering about, I, I know you've been moving people around in district to avoid having to hire peop, uh, new, new teachers and classroom assistants and things like that. What's the status of the interventionists and the coaches? Have you had to use any of those?
Not at this moment in time.
Perfect. So everybody has an interventionist?
Everyone has an intervention, all the interventionists that were in existence prior to the end of the school year are still in existence. All the math coaches and reading coaches.
Perfect.
Nothing's changed there.
Will you let us know if you have to use those people?
I will. Yep.
Okay. That's good news.
Yeah. As we get resignations, we're working really hard with our principals to look at caseloads or figure out, you know, if we could collapse sections of courses or post for a point six or a point four instead of a one point oh. So, and I have to say like principals have been super, super responsive and coming with really good solutions and have been really cooperative without compromising truly what they need.
Good. Okay, that's good news.
Yeah. Good news and, you know, not such a great context, but.
RJ, a good question for you on our copier contracts.
Yep.
The lease, why are we so far over with copy charges?
So the copy service, I think we talked about, I think this came up a few. So with the lease, to get the lower price, we pay per copy, but in totality, if you look at it from year over year, it's a cheaper model for us to do it that way. The other model we had prior, we were paying a larger monthly fee. With, and so you were seeing less per click, but we were paying for copies that we weren't actually making.
So it's still setting us way under?
It's setting us under.
What we were with the old lease?
Correct. You're, you're seeing the per click, which allows us to monitor a little bit better to know what we're actually paying for. But before it was just a one blanket period payment and if we paid for it, whether we used it or not. So we, we lowered the blanket. We're paying per click. We're fine financially. We, we save based on our, on our consumption.
I knew you said it was going to be a lot less. I just wasn't sure about that portion of it.
Yep.
And then on all the positions for the fall coaching, none of these are new positions, right? These are just refilled positions that we've always had, the re-assistant coaches for football?
Correct. There were two cut.
Okay.
I, I, he must have been reading my mind. I went to our spreadsheet that we worked on prior to making postings during the budget season.
Yep.
And there were two additional assistant football coach positions that were, it was reduced.
I remember that we had reduced something, but I couldn't remember exactly.
You are correct.
Which coaching position it was.
Yeah. So all of those listed are in alignment with what we planned for the budget.
With the decreases.
With the decreases.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
No problem.
Anything else? Done. Copy soon.
Okay. Brings us to acceptance of meeting minutes for June 18th, 2024. Any objections? Anyone have any lemons? No? All right. We will accept the meeting minutes of June 18th. And this brings us to our audience of citizens portion of this evening.
I have had it open for quite some time and there is currently, nobody is.
You have someone here?
All right. I will continue to monitor in the interim.
Chris Perdott, Seventeen Longtuck Street, East Haven. Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you much for that.
Chris Perdott, Seventeen Longtuck Street, East Haven. I just wanted to speak a moment on what was going on earlier during the workshop in regards to uniforms and dress codes, stuff like that. Specifically on the academy. I'd just like to say I have to agree with member Hennessy and Johnson here with the uniforms at the academy. I was an original academy student back many, many years ago with Ms. Johnson. And I think that keeping the uniform there would be a positive thing. I understand that there's some concerns about what we can legally do, what we can't do. That school was, always had a uniform. As member Hennessy said, when you sign your child up for that school, you are notified that there's a uniform. I myself try to get my son into that school many times where I don't have a problem with a uniform. If there's parents that do have a problem, there would be, do have other schools that their children can go to that would open up for the kids that are on waiting lists to get into that school. I waited a few years to get me into that school and I couldn't. And I have no problem with a uniform. I think it's a positive thing. There's many studies that show positivity with uniforms. There's other countries that have higher test scores than our country in test score, schooling test scores that all wear uniforms. You look down to adulthood with fire academies, police academy, military academy, everything in uniform. And there's a reason for it and there's positiveness behind it. Again, with the law, if you're saying that we can't legally force anyone to do it, again, they're signing up, agreeing to do it. But at that rate, if they're saying that the law says that they just have to be covering their private worth at that point, as member Perdott said, was, we'll cover belly shirts. At that point, you're saying that we can't wear belly shirts. Well, yes, they can. You're saying at that point that it's only covering here.
Technically.
That, that maybe we're belly shirts. So if we're going to say they can't wear belly shirts, well, you're, you're infringing on our laws then at that point. I understand it's hard for administrators to necessarily enforce all the time. But again, being that I was here when the academy started, so was Ms. Johnson here, and coming into a school system that never had uniforms at all before, to a school that started, but did we really have any problems with uniforms? We didn't enforce them at that point. You didn't wear the uniform, you got called up to the office, your parent got called. I'll tell you right now, as a parent, if I'm going to get called every day and bothered at work because my kid's not dressing the right way, I'm going to make sure I dress it with my kid and make sure the kid wears the uniform. You can't just keep on the excuses of, well, it's not being enforced. That's not an answer. The reason for this board and for the policies is to have a policy and make sure it gets enforced. Last year, we were here around this time, maybe a little earlier, to do with another policy that had to do with grades and sports and stuff like that. And that's a pretty interesting subject, but that ended up being like a six-month ordeal where it was brought up because the policy was not being enforced the way it was supposed to be. So we were going to change it. And it's not necessarily the answer, it's change it. Just because it's not being enforced, we, maybe we just need to enforce it, make sure it's enforced. So again, with all the other schools that plan, you want to go back to the regular dress code? That's the way it always was, but the academy was always a uniform. There's a reason for a uniform. You sign up for that school knowing there's a uniform. And if you don't like it, there's a lot of parents that want their kids in that school that are on waitlist to get into that school.
You know you can't make the leave.
So, no, you call their parent every day and bother them at work. Like I said, I would get ticked off and I'd be making sure my kid isn't wearing the uniform if they're going to call me every day and bother me every day. So, thank you very much.
Emily.
Emily Putney, seventy-two Willow Road. Turn it on.
Yeah, we'll get it on underneath it.
Hello. Hello. Emily Putney, seventy-two Willow Road. I will be speaking on behalf of the dress code. As an EHA student for the past seven years, I've seen firsthand the positive and negative effects of the dress code policy. I would like to make note that I'm all for dressing appropriately and in no way against creating a safe environment for students to learn. I am however against the idea of how we have to wear certain colors and or patterns. Doing this makes students blend in and doesn't allow them to, doesn't allow for them to express themselves freely. It also makes shopping for clothes much harder because the clothes of these colors usually don't match other standards. In conclusion, I'm a firm believer that people should dress and feel comfortable in their own skin and that they should feel safe and happy in school. Thank you.
Ellery Delucia, three two five, Mansur Gaurav. I'm an EHA student and I believe that the dress code, like we shouldn't be able to have to wear uniforms and we should just wear what we want. But I am for having appropriate attire because every school should have you wear appropriate attire. I feel that students shouldn't be afraid to be dress coded every day and should be more, more worried about what they're wearing, not about what they're learning and working on than being afraid that they're going to get dress coded every day.
Thank you ladies.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else with us that would like to speak this evening? No? No? Online? Any takers?
Nope.
And that concludes our audience of citizens portion for this evening, which brings us to new business. All right. We have six point one, discussion on possible action on the revision of board of education policy. Policy five one one, three two, three point two, attendance, excuses dismissal. Policy five one one eight, student residency. Policy five one one, four point one two, student handbook. Policy six one six, two point four. What's the one two, one two?
It was in parentheses, so it might be, have, at one time had two numbers.
Okay. All right. School volunteers. We have policy five one three two, school attire, dress and grooming. Policy four one one, two point five, fingerprinting and criminal justice information. And we have policy three five four one, point four four, use of private automobiles on school trips. I don't think anyone needs any, has any clarifying questions, so at this time I'll ask for a motion.
Make your motion to approve all the policies Michelle just listed. Second.
Okay. Discussion. Anyone?
So I'm trying to understand which one of these agenda items applies to the academy. I see six point one, six point two.
It's just a general district policy.
So we're eradicating five one three two point one?
That's not in this.
That's six point. Yeah, I know. I'm trying to understand the difference between these two agenda items.
Yeah, well, we have the district policy and then we have the uniform policy.
Right.
So we're right now, we're just talking about the district dress code.
But like the, the academy policy is the eradication of the other policy. Or the, I mean, it's not just the academy, but it's the one where, is that correct?
Right now, we're saying for our district, we are going to adhere to statute of basic cave recommendations for the district.
No, I, I understand that, but, but if, if anyone is concerned about keeping uniforms at the academy, that is not this.
Not necessarily, no, because that would be part of the uniform policy. This never applied to the academy because it was a separate uniform policy.
Right. That, that was a separate policy. This is just about basic. Both, so I guess the both policies could potentially stay.
Yes, if we were to keep the uniforms.
That's what I'm just trying to make clear.
That's how it is now.
Right. Yes. Right.
That's exactly how it is now.
Correct. I'm just trying to differentiate.
Yeah, they have different names.
So I think.
Just make sure you look at both policies, please, because five one three two point one.
If the dress and grooming.
Is five one three two point one, if you look in your pocket, packet, is school uniforms. Dress and grooming, school uniforms. It's one paragraph. Five one.
Three two.
Three two.
It's school attire.
It was called school attire and it had the mandatory dress code policy language for the academy in it that is now in strike through.
Why would that have been in there, not in the uniform policy?
That's just what it was. They were, they were reversed. They were originally reversed, so like five one, five one three two is generally your school attire, dress and grooming.
Yeah.
Five one three two point one is about uniforms. That's where the information specific to uniforms really should have been. But when it was originally created, it was done under five one three two.
So with, what they could do is if they hadn't, if there was a majority who felt like they wanted to revise five one three two point one rather than eradicate, you can make that motion.
Correct.
In five one three two point one.
Yeah, because that's where it should be. I mean, that's the name of it is.
It's school uniforms.
And that you have something just for one school and different policy. It doesn't even make sense.
Five one three two is just about dress and grooming. The five one three two point.
Two.
One is specific to school uniforms.
Which is where if you had anything about uniforms, I would think you would be there.
Right. It should have been here, so the.
So if you don't eradicate it, you could revise it.
You could revise it. Right. Because it is no longer in the five one three two policy, which is located here. Correct. Yeah. I just want to make sure people understand when they're voting, what they're voting for.
I, I still don't understand, but I'm okay.
Okay.
I do.
I don't care.
Well, for some reason, whoever voted on the policy put uniforms in the wrong spot.
Well, we're getting rid of it now by voting yes.
Wait, wait.
No, not necessarily.
It's five one three two. The reason they put point one is, is not because it, because they added school uniforms here.
No, but they. No, but they said that it was in.
It's, it shouldn't be in both, but it is.
No, it was, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
No, we're going back to ninety-eight, reviewed on twenty-twenty.
Right. Yep, what date twenty-twenty was that?
February twenty-twenty.
Oh, right before that.
Yeah. Not before, really. I mean, that's when we got out, but. All I know is.
So he had Miss Putney made him.
Parents are asking now about what your kids are wearing, so we, we need to make this.
Any other comments before we go to vote these?
What?
Would that be helpful? Do you want to pick a vote?
No.
Anyone? All right, um, Erica, roll call vote.
Did you hear that word? No.
On the approval of six-point-one.
Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
Abstain.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Terello?
Abstain.
And Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
Four yes, two abstentions, one no. Motion passes.
Okay. Brings us to six point two, Discussion on Possible Action on the Eradication of BOE Policy five-one-three-two-point-one, Dress and Grooming, School Uniforms. I believe this is one everyone was concerned with. So I will ask, does anyone need a clarifier on this before we, I asked for a motion so we could open it up for discussion? Nope? Then I'll ask for a motion at this time?
Make a motion to, uh, I guess, take action on the eradication of Board of Ed Policy five-one-three-two-point-one, Dress and Grooming, School Uniforms.
Second by Erica. All right. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I guess I have a question. So what would eradicating, remove, I know what it means.
I don't know.
It means that an additional school like the academy would be able to put in a uniform dress code.
If you eradicate it or not, if you don't.
If you don't, the way it stands, in addition to fulfilling the requirements of the Board's dress code policy, individual schools in this district may encourage students to wear a school standardized uniform.
Encourage.
Encourage.
Not required.
Correct.
And it would be up to the school, so.
So the academy could still choose to encourage the families to wear the academy logo and academy dress attire. If we leave this in.
I don't, I don't agree with the way we're interpreting that. I feel like five-one-three-two-point-one is the policy we changed from when all the elementary schools wanted uniforms.
This is five-one-three-two dot one that Linda offered to bring over to you.
No, he's saying, he thought we changed all the school colors.
Right, that was in this one. That was in the first one, not point one.
It was done in the long policy for some reason.
Yeah, okay.
Because this one is just about specific uniforms.
Yeah, by school, right?
In addition to this.
By school.
Individual schools in the district may encourage students to wear a school standardized uniform.
I, I thought that was how we did it in the elementary schools and not in the middle school.
It was a uniform, it was dress code.
Yeah, okay.
Because a uniform is a uniform. Like, I remember, um, Grandin Rochelle, like, if they didn't have their white polo on with their hackies on Award Day or Presentation Day or anything, then that was a new go.
So this just supports any school that wants to have their own suggested, school-specific clothing to themselves.
I mean, do they need our permission to do that anyway?
Yes.
I don't know.
Yes.
Well, they can make their own student handbook, though.
But they still need the Board policy, then put it in their handbook.
But again, it was, it's only suggested. They can't require it.
I don't understand.
And then in addition, suggested.
Always. You legally can't require.
New Haven public schools require.
I have no idea how because I don't believe you can unless you're private school.
Because a lot of them call themselves magnet schools now. And we're, we're uniforms. Every school, every elementary school in New Haven wears.
Not all of them.
They all know.
I don't think.
Nathan Hale doesn't, um, that's.
Just the magnet schools do?
Just the magnet schools. Which are, they have their own rules.
Which is kind of what the academy was.
That's right.
Exactly. And which it should have stood instead of.
Like, lie in there, you were a great into the rules.
And you could have made that a magnet school rather than.
Well, it was in, considered an intra-district magnet school. That's what it's called.
It wasn't registered with the state as a, as a magnet school.
It wasn't?
No, it didn't get magnets.
That's what you could have did.
Right.
It was not classified.
It was just classified internally as the intra-district.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
This allows for them to not continue to have it if they choose.
To encourage.
To incur, right.
Yeah.
But I don't, I mean, it sounds like it would depend on who's the principal of the academy, sort of, if, if we're talking about.
Not really, because you're just suggesting.
Right.
Anybody could do it. You could go stand there out there tomorrow and would assign and say, please wear this.
Well, I'm just saying, if, if the principal at the academy isn't really interested in continuing it, and, and that's kind of what we're hung up on, really, the academy. I don't think we're hung up on the elementary schools. I could be wrong. I don't wanna speak for anybody assumed, but I think the academy is what we're kind of hung up on, but if.
And that's the only one that's still practicing.
Right, if the principal at the academy feels like she doesn't have the bandwidth or it's not part of the current culture, the culture has shifted, then I don't really see the point in continuing. I mean, I agree with what, like, one of the members of our community came up and said about how it's part of it, they signed agreement. I mean, I feel that way.
I don't think they signed, I didn't, I never signed an agreement.
Well, I, I, I feel like it is part of the culture. I like it. I, I think it's.
I didn't dislike it either. I'm not saying.
Right, no, I, but you, you know, going in, when you decide to send your child there, like, oh, they're gonna have to wear a uniform. Okay, I'm okay with that.
I always liked it. I liked it too. Yeah, I always enjoyed them being in the uniform.
It's a bottom rack in the closet.
It made shopping. The last few years, what I've, I've seen and heard a lot of is they're still doing what they're supposed to do. And they're still struggling with the very basics, like, you know, all I have right now is a light pink plain sweatshirt with nothing on it, but I can't wear it. And I'm gonna be cold, but all of my friends are gonna wear whatever they want. Because they're struggling to follow the policy.
Knowing that nobody else is, and it puts them in a kind of a.
Maybe ten percent of the kids, right, that bottom line.
Right.
And not that that's a reason, I agree, like, that's not a reason to necessarily get rid of it.
I can see the frustration with the kids in general when it's not, there's no accountability.
I wish we would start moving in a direction where we make decisions based on student outcomes instead of surveys. I mean, this is nonsense. That school was extremely successful, produced countless amount of successful kids, and we're chipping it away, little by little.
That was when you tested in.
What's that?
When you're testing in, the brightest of the district, so going to one school.
It was way after that, Michelle.
Stop it, Michelle.
The brightest ones were still there.
Stop it.
After testing, we were still the highest.
Who did you end say, testing?
I'm sorry?
What year did you end testing in?
We just graduated the first class for, that was in there from first grade, so gee, I don't remember what year. Do you remember what year that was?
Eight years ago.
Eight years. Tony, Tony Serio was here.
I think it was two thousand and ten.
Tony Serio was president, was superintendent, rather.
It was about two thousand and ten, right?
No, I think it was Dr. Bonner.
Wow.
No, no, no.
Because I went to Tony Serio and asked you to go to.
So maybe two thousand.
Testing. To, to get to testing. I was, I was principal when that happened.
Yes.
It was my second year as principal.
Yeah.
Maybe two thousand and eight.
But we, it wasn't. When we went to lottery. I mean, we're, we're getting way off topic now, but we were, we were successful, way past that. There were a lot of changes. Way past that, we were successful. That were differences between the formatting of the, of the school and who, and you went, after it went to lottery even, you still conducted yourself in a different way. And, and had different, same curriculum, so to speak, but not, it was integrating. Help me. We're getting, we're getting way off topic now, but that's why I'm trying not to go too much on that, but.
Always.
Yes.
For me, it became like a parent does with a lot of things, that it became a decision about how I felt about it was choosing my battles and not just with my kids, but with other parents in the district as well. And that's why I think we asked for the survey across the board was because parent satisfaction, satisfaction matters. And I think we need to take it into account. And I, I just feel like this is a losing battle at this point. It has been for a few years.
No, I've had the same battle, like, with my kids or at the war when, you know, like, with my daughters more so. But if you don't wanna wear it, my, you know, I, I don't wanna, all my friends are wearing what they wanna wear, why do I have to wear this? And I, I understand that, um, and I, I understand that argument, the kids are, it's upsetting for the kids. Because they're like, why do I have to do the right thing when no one else does?
Who wants to start your day with that battle going off to school? Because it sets the tone. Well. Lessons learned. I, I don't know.
Any other comments, questions? Erica, anything on, uh, the eradication of policy five-one-three-two-point-one?
No, I just think we should follow what the families are asking for, obviously, the policy.
Okay, all right, Erica, roll call vote.
Ms. DePalma?
You guys listen to the children. At this point.
Well, this allow, just as a side note, this allows them to still do what they want. This is just allowing the schools to suggest school-specific attire that is not required.
This motion was to eradicate the policy.
Yes, eradicate.
Just clarifying.
Yeah.
Right, that by eradicating it, they will no longer have the option to have school-specific attire.
Right.
That's right.
Just want it to be very clear what we're voting on.
What the motion is on.
I'm still not clear, but I agree with you.
So. My question, eradicating it would lead to. No more uniforms. No, if you eradicate it, but if you, and then if you say, yes, they could encourage, which, to each his own, but the problem would be, the problem would be if they tried to do something like this year.
We have a policy of suggestion, okay?
So I'm gonna say. How unpractical would that be?
Right, I, I mean.
So you're, if you don't, you're not gonna vote to eradicate it, then it's a no vote?
I'm gonna help tea and vote no for her. Make the record, note the record.
Well, I, I don't know, but if it needs to be, it's a suggested thing. I, I don't.
You could just put it in their handbook. These are our school colors.
We can revise it to say something else. I.
Or you could do that.
I don't know. I always would like to just.
Well, right now, the motion is for eradication, so I guess.
So I'm gonna say I don't wanna eradicate.
So you're a no vote?
You're a no.
Okay.
No.
Mr. Hennessy?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Putney?
No.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Terello?
No.
Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
Two yeses, two in favor. Five opposed. Motion does not pass.
So there could, they will still be suggesting uniforms at the academy going forward?
Well, it doesn't say anything about the academy. It just says any school can.
It leaves the possibility. I think it's up to the school at this point.
I think a policy about suggestion is ridiculous, but that's just.
So is it?
I don't know.
No, I don't, I can't believe it said suggested anyway because it was never suggested.
Oh, no.
It was never suggested.
No, it was reviewed in February of twenty-twenty, Karen.
February of twenty-twenty.
Um, okay. All right, six point three.
Okay, yeah, six point three, Discussion on Possible Action on the Approval of Asset Disposals. Any clarifiers? If not, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve the asset disposals.
Thank you.
Second. Great. Any questions, comments? No, no, not hearing any. Erica, roll call vote.
Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Terello?
Yes.
Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
We have six point four, Discussion on Possible Action on the Approval of the East Haven Academy Playground Removal.
I will make a motion to approve, um, the removal of the East.
I don't know if we do a survey anymore.
Maybe.
I will make a motion to approve the East Haven Playground Removal.
And I second that.
Any questions or comments on that?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Are they getting a new playground?
Yeah, I was gonna chime in here. So the town is building a new playground as part of the project with the tennis course on the, in the front of the building, which, um, will be, um.
They're no longer tennis courts, correct? They're pickleball?
Yeah, they're pickleball courts with a basketball court, but what I do know is there's a playground, if you're looking at it from the building, all the way to the left, the whole left side is going to be a playground, suited for, um, the three-eight H group. Um, we've talked to Bob's team, it's gonna be special and inclusive materials there. And the playground in the back was closed off for most of last year because it was da- dangerous. The wood is splintering, it's very old. So, um, what I'd like to do is dispose of that, pull the posts out, leave it mulched with the swings to provide another area for the students to have in the back of the building as well as the front of the building. Um, if we can, with approval tonight, I can get the team on it, so before the start of the school year, they have that extra space. Um, so it will still be used for outdoor use, just not the playground where we can't let students there for safety purposes.
Thank you.
Yep.
When will the, um, playground, will the playground, I mean, if you're not using it anyway, I guess it doesn't matter, but when will the playground be finished? And what will the kids do at, I mean, in the interim, when will that town do the playground?
The initial timeline was within the next month, so it should be ready for, I think, I believe they already paved the surface and the playground part is the rubberized surface like we have at Deer Run. So as soon as the playground company can come in and start, it should be a three-week process.
When did they say it would be available?
The initial timeline that we had was for, it would be ready before the start of school.
No, I know, but when did you get the initial timeline?
Um, probably end of June, when they finalize the plan for the actual parts of the playground.
So hopefully by the end of this month, it'll be.
Hopefully by, correct, hopefully we are ready, first day of school is a playground and the students have something to use. But in the interim, if there is a delay, at least they have the back area to use for other games and use.
And the courtyard.
And the courtyard, where now it's just the back, the back playground is caution taped off because it's so unsafe.
Roll call. Okay. Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Terello?
Yes.
Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
Seven in favor, motion passes.
Six point five, we have Discussion on Possible Action on the Approval of the SNAP Fundraising Platform for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Is this our second or third year doing this?
This is our second year of the blanket approval. The, the year prior to that, we did it on an ongoing team basis and it became pretty monotonous as we were coming to the Board pretty frequently. So last year, we did, um, a blanket, so every team was able to just go on with their fundraising. And I know as we start the summer and teams are here sooner, training, we'd like to get them the approval, so, um, we don't inundate the Board with knowing we're, we may not be meeting every two weeks over the summer. I'd like to get them the blanket so they can proceed and plan accordingly for the upcoming year.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve, uh, SNAP fundraising platform for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Whoa. Just say all.
Okay, thank you.
Did you say all? Okay, thank you. I just randomly selected. Any questions or comments on this? Nope, nope. All right, roll call vote.
Okay. Ms. De Palmer?
Yeah, that's a good one too.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago? Ms. Terello?
Yes.
And Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
Seven in favor, motion passes.
Six point six, discussion of possible action on the approval of student accident insurance policy.
So this is two policies, and so you are all aware. Our prior policy ended on June thirtieth and needed to be bound prior to this meeting, so I have bound the policies, but wanted to bring them for you for the legality purposes of your approval. Um, I did so because the two policies, one being our sports accident policy and, and the catastrophe accident policy, this includes our trips for the aviation program when our students fly to Orlando or they fly the individual planes. The additional coverage is included in these two policies, and the two policies combined annually for the year went up seventy eight dollars in total for both. So in the insurance world, that is fantastic. So with that all being said, I bound the policies, so we were covered and we never lapsed in, in policies, but still wanted to bring them forward with you tonight to propose them so you had approval. And, you know, if you choose not to, I can always call and, um, go through the process to undo this, but based on that pricing and what it was covering and the penalty for the lapse, it was in our best interest to move forward, so I did that, but still coming again, coming to you tonight to legalize it.
I have a, a question that you just, did we have to add additional coverage because of the aviation program?
We didn't add additional coverage, but we added a disclaimer in the policy for specific. Um, so when, when we were initializing, we called our legal team when we did this initially to, for the, for the permission slips. And they, um, suggested that we call our insurance carrier to let them know. So they did not require an additional, um, level or rider for it, but they did want to specifically state that aviation program was covered for these two specific trips and nothing more beyond those two trips. So it is covered again if we are to take those two trips in this plan, if we take a, you know, if we do a third or a fourth, it will get added on and be addressed at, at that point in time.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
What's the cost of the insurance?
So, um, the, the sports accident insurance last year was twenty one thousand five eighty nine, and it went up to twenty one thousand six thirteen. That's an increase of twenty four dollars, and the catastrophe insurance was three thousand thirty one dollars last year, going up to three thousand eighty five dollars this year, which was the increase of fifty four dollars.
I know. So can I make a motion?
Yep.
To approve the student accident insurance policy.
I will second.
Any questions, comments? Everyone good? All right. Erica, roll call vote.
Certainly. Ms. De Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Terello?
Yes.
Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
Seven in favor, motion carries.
Brings us to six point seven, discussion of possible action on the approval of the East Haven Public Schools Professional Growth and Support Plan. I think it is here for us this evening to vote on before we submit it to the state, correct, for final approval?
If the state ends up making suggestions for revisions, we are just required to come back and present those revisions to you.
And we'll get updates on how things are moving along too.
Yeah.
Throughout the year.
Yes, but the board is required to approve the plan. We have to submit the plan to the state. They can accept it or they can return it with feedback for edits. If we have to make edits to the plan, then we just have to notify the board.
Now, motion?
I will make a motion to approve the East Haven Public Schools Professional Growth and Support Plan.
Second.
Yeah, second. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this? No, Erica, roll call vote, please.
Ms. De Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Terello?
Yes.
Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
Seven in favor, motion carries.
Two in hand on this one. All right, that is the end of our meeting. Again, for future agenda items, please, uh, let us know at least a week prior to the next meeting so we can make sure we have any materials that you might need. So, oh yeah, is everyone in the meeting or August thirteenth?
I just want to clarify for anyone, I, the uniform policy is on. I mean, it is.
We have a dress and grooming policy.
Correct.
The school has a standardized uniform, but it's not required.
Exactly. It is not a requiring uniform for anyone that is concerned that we left that other policy and we left that in.
I see it like East Haven Academy, for an example, needs to have the awesome logo on their shirt, maybe for school pride, they want to encourage that everyone that enrolls purchases a shirt for their school pride and wears it.
Any school can do that.
Any school can do that.
Right, yes.
I, I don't know if I would call it uniform, but.
Right, no, well, we.
That's just, using that word uniform.
Requirement is.
Maybe we can put on a list agenda to revise that policy.
Yeah, I'd say we do it.
But not that you, you can go again. Well, of course, we do, just that one.
That's required. I don't know.
Right, but anyone who is concerned that there are now, there are still uniforms at the academy. I mean, the principal could suggest that according to the policies we have now, but it is not a policy that we have. I just wanted to clarify.
They made the suggestion with that last four years.
Well, that one is approved.